Meeting of September 9th to order. The roll call is Councilmember Berman, Bert, Holman, Niss, Klein, Price, Mayor Scharf, Councilmember Schmidt, and Vice Mayor Shepherd. Seven present. Council will be going into a closed session on conference with City Attorney Legal Council on construction of Mitchell Park Library and Community Center and potential litigation relating to the state water project property tax levy.
There's actually six present.
Okay, six present.
And there's no reportable action? Do you want to... So our first order is a special order of the day, and we have a proclamation expressing appreciation for the volunteer efforts of Manao and Peter Keegan in establishing a student exchange to Yangpu District, Shanghai, China, and an expression of appreciation to all of the students who went on the trip. So the first thing is, I think we'd like to call Peter Keegan and Manao Keegan up.
As representing Peter Keegan.
Okay. You're Manao. Okay, great. Well, we have a proclamation thanking you, and I can ask Vice Mayor Shepherd to read it.
I can do it.
You have it there?
It's good to see you guys again. This is the City of Palo Alto proclamation expressing appreciation for the volunteer efforts of Manao and Peter Keegan in establishing a student exchange in Yangpu District, Shanghai, China. Whereas the City of Palo Alto recently signed a smart partnership agreement with the District of Yangpu, Shanghai, China, and whereas as part of this agreement, the city is interested in creating an exchange program for high school students which highlights intercurricular understanding and experimental learning. And whereas, in a very short amount of time, Manao and Peter Keegan managed to put together a very meaningful trip for six students to Shanghai, China, and whereas Manao and Peter Keegan's leadership, can-do spirit, and associates were engaged to create a three-week program that provided tremendous opportunity for students to emerge in language, culture, and business in Yangpu. And whereas during the trip, Peter Keegan kept an email diary of the students' daily activities, which was well received by parents and city officials. And whereas the students all reported an extremely positive experience that was illuminating educational and life-changing. And whereas, the City of Palo Alto thanks all of the people and organizations that the Keegans collaborated with to produce an amazing experience, including Dr. Ken Fong, who provided a generous donation to underwrite a major portion of the program, the Yangpu District Government, Long Fei Fei, Fudan University, VMware and EMC, General Motors, Wells Fargo, the American Chamber of Commerce, and so many others. Now, therefore, I, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council, extend our deepest thanks to Manao and Peter Keegan for their generous donation of time, talent, and treasure to produce such a meaningful program for the youth of Palo Alto.
Don't go away. Come down with me.
Okay.
Yeah, Peter's not feeling very well, so he can't be here, but...
Would you speak into the mic, my order?
Yeah. Peter's not feeling very well, so he can't be here, but he is the one who spent the most time and volunteered his time to stay with the kids for three weeks in Shanghai. But we want to thank the city for the opportunity.
Stay up there.
Yeah. Okay.
And now we'd like to call the students who went on the trip who are here to come up to the podium, and you're going to show a PowerPoint presentation. So, welcome. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
And now, you're going to show us a PowerPoint presentation, right?
I'm going to give you a short introduction to our program, and then I'll play the PowerPoint.
Great.
So my name is Valerie Lee. I'm a junior at Gunn High School, and today we are very honored to be sharing our experiences and our memories from our Shanghai trip. The Smart Cities Program is sponsored by the City of Palo Alto. We spent three weeks in Shanghai visiting businesses, and we went to school at Fudan Fuzhou to learn Chinese. First of all, I'd like to thank Nancy, Mark, Peter, and the City of Palo Alto for putting so much time into making this trip happen. We will be showing a PowerPoint of our trip and talking about our experiences, ways to improve life in Palo Alto, and things we can offer Shanghai citizens. The first question, we will be answering our experiences from our trip to Shanghai. This is Catherine, and she's a junior at Gunn High School.
So my three most memorable experiences when traveling to Shanghai was being able to develop confidence when speaking Chinese, because it's not an easy skill you can develop in the classroom, because you're not speaking to anyone local, and the teacher is just one person, and you can gauge your Chinese skills based on the locals. And then, one of my second most valuable experiences was learning more about the Chinese culture that I didn't know before. I'm able to know where my parents come from, and how Chinese people think, and what is important to them. And then, under the culture section, what was also memorable to me was the food, because it's a way of discovering someone's culture, and food is very important in one's culture. And then the third most memorable experience was learning about business in China and doing business in China. I learned what Chinese companies look for when going to the American market, and what they need to do to succeed. And I also learned the other way around, where when American companies go to China, what they need to do to succeed, and how they can work around the Chinese rules and regulations.
For me, being able to explore the city and intermingle with the people and the culture of China was really important to me. I used the Chinese that I learned in the Palo Alto Unified School District Language Program and our program at Long Fei Fei to communicate fluently with the locals and the kids at camp. One of my main experiences was being able to teach English to my roommates and all her friends, and I had a really good time. Next, we will have Mac, and we will have Chuck talk about how they can...the skills they use to learn their life...to improve our life in Palo Alto.
Hi, my name is Mac. What I learned was being able to grasp the everyday life of the Chinese people is really interesting, and being able to bring it back to Palo Alto and share that with the people in this area, so they can understand the same thing, how they live, just how they live, and as well as bridging this gap between businesses in China and Palo Alto, so that we can bring together the Silicon Valley vibe here and bring it to Shanghai.
I'm Sean Keegan, a senior at Palo Alto High School, and I just wanted to start by recognizing that Palo Alto as a city has a very international identity, and it's a very multi-ethnic, multicultural, and diverse community, where, just as a personal example, in one of my elementary school classes, out of 40 parents, they were from 25 different countries. And most of my friends at school are...I have Asian friends, I mean, I won't get into too many specific details, but I mean, I have friends, I have a very diverse set of friends, it's a very diverse community overall. So this really highlights how important this program is, because I believe that this summer program showed its value lies in providing a valuable global business experience, like practical world experience, to the students, us, that participate in it. And I think this experience helps contribute to the identity and unique culture of Palo Alto as a whole, and helps contribute to our own understanding of the world and our own education.
Next, I will have Charlie talking about how he can offer citizens a better life in Shanghai.
All right, so the most important thing that we can help Chinese citizens, specifically in Shanghai, because we went there, we can allow...we allowed Shanghai citizens to feel more comfortable with American culture by coming to them and interacting with them. Our international friendships can be strengthened through business collaborations. Like, we met with several business heads there, which can only strengthen our relationship. And also, if this program expands, like throughout the U.S. and China, we can improve our diplomatic and cultural relationship ultimately. Thank you.
This concludes everything we have to say, and that we'd like to say, we really encourage you guys to keep on improving this program, making it better, and inviting more people to come, because it was a really memorable experience. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Stay up there. We also have...first of all, we have a letter from Anna Schu congratulating you. It says, "Congratulations on completing the Palo Alto-Yangpu Summer Youth Program. I'm very proud of you for taking advantage of opportunities to not only engage in different cultures and languages, but also to study business and the global economy. I'm confident that what you've learned during your three weeks in Shanghai will contribute to your future academic and career experiences, and I look forward to seeing all of your future accomplishments. All my best, Anna Schu, Member of Congress." And each of you will get a copy of the letter. It's each written to you each individually. So, put this over here. And then, we also have, for each of you, a certificate of recognition from our state Senator Jerry Hill. And our state senator said, "Congratulations on your completion of the Palo Alto-Yangpu Summer Youth Program. Through this program, you enhanced your knowledge of Chinese language and culture, were able to experience firsthand our community's connection to the Pacific Rim, and observed the far-reaching influence of our innovation economy in California and Silicon Valley. Your adventurous efforts and experience put you in a position to become a future leader of our community. Best wishes for continued success. Jerry Hill, Senator of the 13th District." And we also have a certificate of recognition from our assemblyman, Rich Gordon. And Rich said, "Thank you for being a representative and youth ambassador for Palo Alto and the entire region. I hope that your experience while in Shanghai fosters a continued desire to learn more about the world you live in." And then I also wrote you a letter to each of you, which says, "Congratulations on completing the Palo Alto-Yangpu Summer Youth Program. As a city, we are delighted that you represented Palo Alto and Shanghai, China. Exchange programs such as the Palo Alto-Yangpu Experience strengthen your cultural diversity skills and increase your knowledge about global and local issues. They allow you to develop your foreign language skills and build new networks. They also allow you to be introspective to determine your passions and future pursuits. We are certain that the outcomes of this experience will be far greater than just your visit to China. Thank you for acting as a youth ambassador and representing Palo Alto and Yangpu District of Shanghai, China. Sincerely, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor." So we have one of those for each of you, and we'll go down there and I'll hand them out. But before we do that, I also have a letter thanking Kenneth Fong for his contribution to this. Says, "Dear Dr. Fong, thank you for your generous donation to the City of Palo Alto to offset the cost of the Yangpu Summer Youth Program. We appreciate your willingness to take a sponsorship role in this youth exchange program. Your contribution allowed John Stevenson, Valerie Lee, McLean Mansfield, Charlie Stevenson, Thomas Kagan, and Catherine Tang to build cultural diversity skills, act as ambassadors for the City of Palo Alto, and create a lifetime of memories. We sincerely appreciate your generosity. Sincerely, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor." So why don't you come down, and we'll hand out the certificates of appreciation. And thanks again for the presentation. It seems like you had a great experience. Now we move to the city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Actually, first thing, if I might, just as a follow-on to that great recognition there, in having been in Shanghai with councilmembers Shepherd and Berman, and former mayor Yahweh Ye. In particular, of course, this whole idea and everything was a big interest of our former mayor and also councilmember Shepherd, or Vice Mayor Shepherd. And I just did want, on the staff side, really be sure that everybody understood that this particular program really happened this year because of Nancy Shepherd's shepherding of the project relentlessly through and over lots of potential hurdles that we had, and obviously, many people were involved, but Nancy Shepherd deserves a lot of recognition and credit for the effort on this coming together. So, I did want to share that the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board will be presenting the City of Palo Alto's Regional Water Quality Control Plant with the 2013 Dr. Teng Chung Wu Pollution Prevention Award on September 11th at 9:00 a.m. in Oakland, California. The city will receive the award for its long and deep leadership implementing cutting-edge water pollution prevention programs in Palo Alto, and specifically, our leadership on proper disposal of pharmaceutical waste and research in action on other potential pollutants of concern. Karen North, who is our source, control manager with Public Works, will receive the award on behalf of the city, and there'll be more information on the city's website. So, congratulations to the good work we do on behalf of our citizens and the other four cities in the district, and obviously, the entire Bay Area, which benefits from it. I know now that you guys have been waiting for this moment, but the Junior Museum and Zoo is hosting a Bubble Palooza.
Ow!
A Bubble Palooza on Sunday, September 15th. That's actually from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Come to the museum and be transported to a world of bubbles with free activities throughout the day and a ticketed 45-minute shows with the Amazing Bubble Man.
Brilliant.
Discover the principles behind bubbles with our science educators. Experiment at the Bubble Playstation. Encase yourself in a human-sized bubble. Explore the connections between animals and bubbles, et cetera. Tickets are required. There is a cost per person for the Amazing Bubble Man show, but children...children...I'm just reading it the way it's presented to me. Children under the age of one are admitted free.
How do you treat that?
Sorry, I did not get to proof that before I got it. Just recently, the last major impediment to steelhead migration in Lower San Francisco Creek was removed with federal and state funding, and last Thursday, a brief celebration was held on the banks of the creek because this concrete structure, the Bonde Weir, I guess, was removed. Our creek is one of the few remaining free-flowing Bay Area urban creeks, not confined to a concrete channel, and is identified as one of the eight priority watersheds for steelhead restoration. The removal project also protects and enhances over 120 feet of streambed by adding new rock material designed to withstand the creek flows associated with a 100-year storm. And then, also sharing that the Rin Canada Park Long Range Plan, a special community meeting to review the long-range plan, will take place this Thursday from September 12th, beginning at 6:30 p.m., running to 8:00 p.m. in the community room of the Lucy Stern Center. And it will review the final draft of the long-range plan, which has been under development for the past year. On another matter, staff will be holding a community meeting with the residents of the South Gate neighborhood on Tuesday, September 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the Palo Alto Unified School District Boardroom on Churchill Avenue, to present the final design and construction schedule for the South Gate Neighborhood Storm Drain Improvement and Green Street Project. And the project does include the installation of new bioretention planters at selected intersections, permeable pavement, et cetera, and new storm drain pipelines. The construction will commence in mid-November. Also, I would say on September 15th, this Sunday, also beginning at 1:00 at Hoover Park, the annual Midtown Neighborhood Association Ice Cream Social, I believe, is taking place. And then, lastly, to council would indulge me, just from the other duties as assigned department, we did get word that in the past couple of weeks, when our own fire chief, Nickel, was at the fire training academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, he was on a flight on his way back, flying back, when something some of us have heard at one point in time or another on a flight, when there was a call-out from the cabin, is there a doctor on the plane? We have a medical emergency. And there was no doctor on the plane. He said, "Well, is there a nurse on the plane?" There was not. "Is there a paramedic firefighter on the plane?" Ah-ha. Chief Nickel was on the plane, was able to attend to the individual, but their condition was significant, and at risk enough that, in consultation with the pilot, ultimately, they did have to make an emergency landing for the person in Salt Lake City, I believe. So, kind of nice. I have a little letter here. He probably would hate that I'm sharing this to you, but I guess it was American Airlines wrote him a letter that said, "Chief Nickel, we're all grateful you were on board and freely offered your medical expertise when it was needed most. Without a doubt, you greatly improved a difficult situation. I realize your offer of assistance was not motivated by any potential reward. Nonetheless, we want you to know how much your efforts were appreciated, and that we look forward to serving you again soon. It would be our privilege to welcome you aboard American when your plans call for travel by air." They gave him a free transportation voucher for the next year, which he immediately turned over to the city clerk, for use by the city and not himself. So, congratulations to Chief Nickel. Thank you.
And now we have oral communications, and these are speakers. You'll have three minutes, and our first speaker is Sydney Journal, to be followed by Jeff Rangel.
So as you may recall from last year, it's about that time of year again, and I'm here to invite you to participate in the Ninth Annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot, and this is on November 28th, Thanksgiving morning. Yes, those are the brochures. And just a little background, in the first eight years of the Turkey Trot, we've raised and donated more than $3 million to three great local nonprofits, which include the Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Clara County, the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley, and the Healthier Kids Foundation of Santa Clara. And this year, we've also added a fourth beneficiary, the Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz County. And in addition, we're expecting 28,000 participants, 1,800 volunteers, and we're hoping to raise and donate more than $850,000. I know that several of you have participated in the past. I did so last year, and it's a great way to start out your holiday season. Besides the 5K Walker Run or the 10K Run, we also have special competitions, and these include the Kids Fun Run, the Fry's Electronics Quickest Cop, Fastest Firefighter Competition, the Virgin America San Jose Mercury News Costume Competition, where there will be free flights and tickets to our very own 49ers, and the Synaptics Can Do Community Challenge. And for the fifth time, thanks to the generosity of Brocade, we're having the Mayor's Cup Challenge, which Jeff will speak in detail about. And so I hope that you guys will come and participate and encourage your coworkers, your family, and friends to join. It's really a great event. Thank you.
Jeff Rangel, to be followed by Kathleen King.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Rangel, and I'm the Director of Corporate Affairs at Brocade, and I have in my hand a sample of the proud trophy that you have the potential of... the proud trophy that you have the potential of winning--
You can just bring it up here now.
Well, Mountain View may not like that, but we'll leave it here for just a moment. But I, again, want to extend the invitation to all of you to consider participating in the Turkey Trot this year and presenting yourselves as potential winners of this Mayor's Cup. Based on your participation, your registration to attend the event, you gather points, and based on the points possible that you achieve, you have the potential of winning this Mayor's Cup in your size category of city, competing with other mid-size cities such as Mountain View, which has actually won this for the last couple of years in a row. Vice Mayor, we appreciate you already registering, and we encourage you to consider inviting your other council colleagues to come and participate as well. Brocade really sees that it's a great opportunity to build community, to support great community organizations, and demonstrate our collective interest in public-private partnerships that really build a vibrant community. So, we encourage you to participate. There's also this year going to be a new category of Most Improved. I think you were in about second or third place last year, so you have opportunity to be considered for the Most Improved category as well. So, again, based on your registrations for points possible, you have the potential to get this Mayor's Cup out of the hands of the City of Mountain View and into your proud hands as well.
So, who registers from -- is it just city council members, or is it boards and commission members?
The city manager and the planning commission as well all receive points possible. And on the Silicon Valley or turkytrotsv.com website, you can see all information about the Mayor's Cup there as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kathleen King.
So, I'm Kathleen King. Thanks for letting me come, and I always like to pass it around so you can each touch it and feel the passion of getting this trophy. So, I'm just going to pass it around, but we do need it back. So, I'm with the Healthier Kids Foundation, and I think many of you know that we have the highest percentage of children that have health insurance of any of the 58 counties. We're all very proud of that. And the Turkey Trot's been a key part of helping get kids insurance, helping them get food and housing. So, I know many of you have been there. I've seen you in the tent. I've seen a few of you getting your massage after the race, and it really is a lot of fun. You know, bring your spouse. We all afterwards get to meet with all the CEOs that are also doing it, and it's -- if any of you, I think Pat's done it, Larry's done it, Nancy's done it, I think Greg's -- yeah, Greg, you did it last year. So, the thing is, we're going from about 22,000 to 23,000 last year, trying to hit 28,000, because if we hit 28,001, we expect we will beat Sacramento, which has had a Turkey Trot for a lot longer than we have. And so, our goal is to be the largest and fastest-growing Turkey Trot of all the Turkey Trot's across the United States. So, it's really also a fun place to wear costume, and it's also a fun place to have a family reunion. And if you can't make it, just run wherever you are, if that means around the couch, we'll accept that. Also, if you can take your Turkey Trot shirts and wear them somewhere fun, I carried six Turkey Trot shirts to Italy with my family this year and took a picture in Venice. So, please join us and enjoy the Turkey Trot with us. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Shepherd had a question for you.
Real quickly, this does sell out, isn't that correct?
It did sell out last year, but--
But you're expanding it?
Yes.
Okay.
We're building all the infrastructure to go to 28,000. We will limit the children to 900. I think we had 1,000 or 1,100 last year. And just from a safety standpoint, we're going to limit the number of children this year.
Okay.
It only goes to two- to seven-year-olds for children.
And it's for the entire population, it's not just council members, so.
Oh, absolutely. It's really a great way to build up that appetite for the rest of the day and feel like you can reward yourself with a good meal afterwards.
Thank you. Palo Alto Free Press, to be followed by Herb Barok.
I just wanted to touch upon a United States Supreme Court decision. It's taken, let's see, 1939, Schneider versus State. It had this to say. "It's a prized American privilege to speak one's mind, although not always with perfect good taste on all public institutions." Schneider versus State, US 147, 139. But listen to this. "Even the expression of 'legislative preferences' beliefs cannot transform minor matters of public inconvenience or annoyance into substantive evils of sufficient weight to warrant the curtailment of liberty of expression." Pretty powerful, isn't it? So, I would like the city council members to really consider clapping, just because it's natural for people to clap and to give credit. It's an expression of how they feel within their heart. Now, I have -- I recall when Jack Morton retired, and we had someone come down with rollerblades or, I think, hockey sticks, and everybody was just excited about it. But in reality, you could really look at that event as being disruptive. You see, that's what we're really talking about. We're talking about people disrupting meetings. So, I don't think clapping or voicing an opinion really constitutes disruptive behavior. So, I'd like city council to perhaps to change this legislative feeling and position with respect to clapping, booing, things of this nature. I think it's time to make that change, because time and time again, we look at happy talk, and then we look at talk that is not acceptable, or it bothers some, and then, all of a sudden, the position is made, "Well, we don't want you to clap, and we don't want you to whistle." So, there really needs to be a balance. So, I think if we make that balance by council members deciding that, "Yeah, okay, as long as you're not disruptive, you know, go ahead and whistle and clap and give credit to the speaker." So, consider that if you would, based upon this United States Supreme Court decision. And oh, by the way, there's many others. New York Times versus Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Barok, to be followed by Art Lieberman.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. This morning, when I was near the city parking lot at the Waverly and Hamilton, where there's a public toilet, I noticed that there was advertising on the outside of that public toilet. It was council policy and part of the contract with the contractor that there be no advertising on it. It happens to be ads from the Ad Council, but that's still advertising. As you may recall, there was a map of downtown on one of the two panels. I don't recall the council ever making any change to the contract with the contractor. So, I would appreciate it if someone follows up on that and corrects the problem, since both the policy and the cost of using the facility were connected, and the council made the decision that there be no advertising. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Lieberman, to be followed by Sven Thiesen.
Good evening. The mayor wrote in his September message to the community that, quote, "When we hear from members of the community, the two things they have the most concerns about are parking and traffic," unquote. I have a feeling that you heard something about the parking issue in a little while, but I want to talk to you about traffic. The mayor goes on to say, "Anecdotally, it feels like there are more cars on the streets of Palo Alto these days, as the city's economic activity has continued to accelerate along with the number of employees coming to work in Palo Alto. While we are lucky that business is booming, we need a comprehensive plan to get more cars off the road and reduce solo driving. While this is a good idea," unquote, I'm sorry, that's the end of his quote. "While this is a very good idea, there needs to be a companion plan, a comprehensive traffic and planning vision for new developments. One by one, I've seen every project that's been proposed is given a green light by the Transportation Division, maybe with a little tweak here and there for traffic, changing a traffic timing on one light. So, traffic creeps up little by little until enough people get really annoyed, and the mayor hears about it and makes a comment about it. So, what I wanted to tell you is that the current process, in my mind, fails to provide a coherent context for new projects. It doesn't place them into an overall roadway use and capacity trade work. Tools exist, and I learned a little bit about it this week, thanks to the planning department, for measuring traffic and projecting future traffic growth, but there's no overall vision, no feedback used to modify development plans in a way that might someday cut back proposals significantly before they're born, or even preclude some otherwise viable projects from seeing the light of day. It will help if more users use mass transit and bicycles, but meanwhile, cut-through traffic is increasing on our streets and our residential areas. This is completely parallel to the parking problem downtown, where parking is already at the breaking point, and a comprehensive, realistic plan that is able to deal with parking demands from those new projects while also protecting residential streets doesn't exist. In fact, the traffic consequences of proposed projects are often in the background. The traffic studies or outputs from the city's own traffic software are often not included in staff reports, the argument being that the planning staff has seen them, resolved them, or mitigated any issues, so there's no need, according to this view, for public input. Actually, public involvement is essential because the traffic issues are complicated and they're contentious, and some proposed solutions, just like parking solutions that have been proposed, have become, in effect, whack-a-mole, when a solution for one area ends up creating a problem somewhere else. Thank you."
Thank you. Sven Thiesen, to be followed by Stephanie Muñoz.
Evening. My name is Sven Thiesen. I'm a Palo Alto resident, electric car driver, and electric car enthusiast. Last week, I sent you all an email regarding what the city should be doing or would like to be doing to make Palo Alto more EV-ready and to retain our leadership position in this sphere, and I wish to reiterate that right now. And I've got good news, and there's just three asks. First, to direct the Planning and Transportation Commission to draft an ordinance to be enacted within the next six months to require all housing stock to be electric vehicle-ready. They're already putting this in as part of their revisions to the comprehensive plan, so it's there. We just want to accelerate it to keep our leadership. And again, in this case, when you're in a hole, the best way to get out of a hole is to stop digging. So, when we put that requirement ordinance on, we eliminate a lot of the hassles. It costs about $200 to make a house EV-ready, and anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 to retrofit later on. So, let's stop digging by building houses without being EV-ready. Second of all, to direct staff to create a task force to streamline the current permitting process that we have in the city, and also to reduce the fee. The fee is $249 for residents per charger to essentially, as the easy case, is to take an electric vehicle charging equipment and plug it in to a dryer outlet. To do that, you have to pay $250. For a commercial facility, for example, my church, it was $449 to install, to get a permit to install this equipment. Third, to direct staff to create a task force to develop a permitting process to address curbside, residential, curbside EV chargers. We have a number of residences where they can't charge, either on their driveway, or they're willing to give away electricity to whoever wants to park in front of their house and charge that way. This reduces safety issues, tripping hazards, a whole number of things. And importantly, we'd like to announce this at the Wednesday, September 25th, EV excitement here in Palo Alto as part of the annual EV celebration of electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Muñoz.
Do we have more? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. I imagine you noticed over the weekend that the J.JNF market has been evicted from the property which is to be developed around it. And I have come to ask you, because I know you cannot discuss it among yourselves, I have come to ask you to put it on the agenda so that you may discuss this development, and hopefully, so that you may ask yourselves what you are going to say two years from now, when that developer comes, or the person to whom he sold the land, and says, "Gosh, you know, we just can't keep -- we've tried our darndest, and we just cannot get a grocery store for that location. It just won't work. We've done everything we can." I'd like you to figure out what you're going to say, and if it's going to be, no, the agreement in developing that property was that you keep a grocery store there, and the understanding of the public was that it was going to be the J.JNF market, but obviously, that did not get written in the contract. If you can make it clear, perhaps you will not destroy the grocery store, because, you know, it isn't that easy to get any old grocery store in. It has to be a rather special personality with the right mix of capital and the right mix of customers. You know from Mickey's Market, it's not that easy. And I have to say that the previous councils have not had too good a track record with these developers. From what I can see, the council gives them a lot, and they are not very grateful. I want to remind you about that bowling alley. We asked you, "Please, you know, can't you get that hotel to leave the bowling alley? And it's from the side, you can't even see it." No, no, no. Okay, they're suing you. Remember the sofa where you got the neighbors to work up a neat program to try and keep the houses not too grandiose, and put little 500-square-foot apartments, granny units, on top of the garages for affordable housing? And the developer said, "Oh, thank you very much. We'll just add that housing to the main house. Thanks." And then, and now you're -- there's buena vista, and it's in the wings, and it's a sort of Damocles, because you don't believe. But anyway, give it some thought. Thanks.
Thank you. And now for the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 5th and August 8th? All right, if we could vote on the board. Who are we missing?
One more.
All right, and that passes unanimously with council members Berman and Niss absent.
There's one more.
There's one more. Price. All right. All right, and now we'll move to the consent calendar. And first of all, I'd like to move that we pull item number seven, which is the council review of an appeal of the director's architectural review approval of a 15,000-square-foot, four-story, 50-foot mixed-use building in the CDC GFP Zone District located at 240 Hamilton Avenue in a mitigated negative declaration. So, I guess we have second, third, and fourth. So, we will not be hearing that tonight. We will set that for a full de novo hearing at some later date. But you can still speak to it. We're still going to allow all speakers to speak to that issue. All right, so which is now, before we do the consent calendar. So, the first person we have on item number seven is Jennifer Landisman, to be followed by Douglas Smith.
Good evening, council. So, 240 Hamilton, the glass cube looks like it could be less offensive than the medieval fortress on 801 Alma, and it's not necessarily replacing a meaningful structure or obstructing a particular view. That's not much of a standard. I wish the cube would speak to proportion, balance, and design, but to me, it just screams square footage. It is unforgiving and thoughtless. I think the ARB, the planning department, and you could do a better job of negotiating outcomes for downtown Palo Alto and not so much gifting away square-- much gifting away square footage. I won't even address parking, traffic issues, which I think should be solved before even thinking about approving such developments. I ask that you consider that glass alone looks okay when it's done as nicely as Apple did with the University Avenue and the Stanford Shopping Center stores, one story. And when you look inside, you see even more wealth and design. You see Apple products. What will we see when we look into the glass floors at Hamilton? Rows of cubicles, and the front view of the back of people's desks. I think you may have driven around town and seen some of these views, and they're not very appealing. Presuming you are going to solve parking and traffic issues, if I were to negotiate on behalf of Palo Alto, I would have the ground floor increase ceiling height and slice off any section at the top, and make the building more forgiving in terms of square footage, and deal with glare of a building, because that's just too much glass. So, either trees or something so that you can maybe hide part of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Smith, to be followed by Bob Moss. Can somebody give me a little coaching as to how to access my visuals?
Yeah.
Right.
No, keep going. In the corner. There you go. And then, I should see the...
I can't see that.
I can't focus on it either.
Can you see that down there? I can't see it.
Where is the... Which item is the... Removable disc? Is that it? I don't know. I can't read it.
Yeah. While you set that up, shall we move on to someone else, and then you can come back to it? Are we ready?
Douglas Smith is the...
So, you want to let someone else talk while we...
You can continue while we fix this up.
I was wondering, Bob Moss?
Want to step aside.
Yeah. You'll need to step aside, Lo.
I guess technology doesn't always work. I have several problems with this project. And the first one is the staff report, which I thought was rather bizarre. It doesn't accurately describe either the existing building or the proposed building. For example, it claims there's a 2,000-square-foot mezzanine which had parking spaces assigned to it. The mezzanine was 1,320 square feet. It's not really usable space, so there should have been no parking spaces assigned to it, and therefore, there shouldn't be that concession for parking. Second, it never mentions the fact that almost 9,200 square feet of the new building will be office space. Third, it still uses the outdated figure of 250 square feet per office worker. That actually is closer to 175 square feet, and in a couple of years, it'll be 150. So, for each 1,000 square feet of office space, you figure seven workers. So, the parking shortage is not just 46 cars. It's more than 60 parking spaces. Then, one of the mitigations is that they're going to be taking out two parking spaces on Ramona, where the driveway's going to go, and so they're going to pay for two parking spaces. Where are those two parking spaces going to be? Are they going to be up in the sky or down in the ocean? We don't have two parking spaces that they can buy. So, what this project does is greatly accentuate the overflow parking into the neighborhood. You've only been talking about overflow parking into the residential neighborhoods along, near downtown for the last 15, 20 years. Maybe someday, you'll actually do something about it and not keep approving projects which don't have adequate parking. One other point, which is quite as serious, the appearance of the building is not particularly attractive. It certainly doesn't fit the Spanish colonial, which is more common downtown. And even as a modern design, it's underwhelming. Frankly, the chairman of my architecture department would have flunked the guy who put this design up. It was a fellow that some of you may have heard of called Ludwig Mies van der Rohe, who was one of the guys who created the Bauhaus. And so, I'm very familiar with modern architecture, and this doesn't do it. There are some streetscapes where modern architecture fits, but this building doesn't. So, you've got a parking problem. You've got increases in jobs, which is going to hurt the jobs, housing imbalance. You've got a poor-looking building. I think you have to have this project come back for a very careful review.
Doug, are you ready?
So, good evening, distinguished members of the City Council. Thank you very much for understanding the gravity of the issues that I raise in this appeal. I'm Douglas Smith. I live one block from here on Forest Avenue. There are three reasons for my appeal. I'll keep my remarks brief tonight. Aesthetic design, which I contend is absolutely incompatible with these surrounding buildings. Second, the parking issue, with which you're very familiar. Other people will speak on that issue. And then, the review process itself. I think that the municipal code, I've been very impressed reading the municipal code and a comprehensive plan at the wisdom and foresight of those documents, but very distressed to see that in this process, from what I observe of the workings of the staff planners and the Architecture Review Board, that the guiding documents are not being followed as intended. Therefore, I see this as an opportunity for the City Council to step in and make some permanent changes for the better. I think it's entirely possible. Up here, well, you're probably aware that I undertook to conduct an online survey using Survey Monkey to find out, am I a crank, or do the people support me? Well, I found out that if I'm a crank, Palo Alto is full of cranks. The building on the left got only 17% of the vote, or no, 15%. 85% of respondents prefer the magnificent Pasadena City Hall to our own. And I can explain technically why that's the case. For one thing, look at the difference in architectural detail. In the building on the left, there's nothing to look at. There's endless things to look at in Pasadena. In this one, a very substantial majority, 80% deem this structure, or this design, the proposed design, as incompatible with the nearby structures, which are very familiar to all of us since they're only one block from here. And then, so, these are the stats. 79.46% agree with my contention that they're not compatible, or that new design is not compatible. In a general question, are, in areas of town where the proportion of older buildings is high, again, 75% almost agree that new buildings should be in the older style, the historic style. And what's the best style for commercial and public areas of Palo Alto? 83% say California Mission or the Spanish colonial style. And I'll continue when the issue comes before the council again. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Richard Brand, to be followed by, sorry, Faith Bell?
Good evening, council members, members of the staff. I appreciate the time. I know we're, I thank you for your vote, and I think it's wise to take this off the calendar. So, what I'd like to say, though, and I've sent an email, I think everybody, the recipients would say this, my good friend, City Manager Keen, the message, "I've got the 318 minutes about parking. What's going on? We are not fulfilling what's in this document. Come on." You know what? We can't let these things go through. I know that the commission approved this, but the staff members are the liaison, not the council members. The staff liaisons to the ARB, and parking is a deficit here. Let's get this fixed, and no more of this allowing exemptions. Thank you.
Faith Bell, to be followed by Ken Alsman.
Hi, Faith Bell from Bell's Bookstore, 536 Emerson Street. I wanted to thank Bob Moss for his comments, which are clearly thought out. I'd just like to say that the scale of the proposed building at 240 to 248 Hamilton should require more onsite parking. I think you're going to hear that message again and again tonight. When we allow projects of this size and scale, the parking problems overflow into neighboring businesses seriously, impacting our ability to do our jobs, also impact the residential neighbors, as I'm sure you've heard. One of the things that I really enjoy about San Francisco is the areas where they have underground parking. So, if you go to Union Square to do some shopping, you can park under Union Square. If you go to the Opera House, you can park underneath the plaza adjacent to the Opera House. You know, the developers tell you that it's too expensive to put in multiple floors of underground parking, but it's only too expensive for them. And what happens is, if they don't put it in, it's too expensive for all the rest of us, and we're the ones that suffer, and they're the ones that profit. So, you need to look at that and think about what we're allowing them to do on our backs. Thank you very much.
Ken Alsman, to be followed by Penny Ellison.
Thank you, Ken Alsman, 1057 Ramona Street. I think you all know my views very well. I just want to thank you for pulling this item tonight. Thank you.
Penny Ellison, speaking on items number 10 and 13. You'll have six minutes, Penny.
Oh, I'll be faster than that. I'm just here tonight, first of all, to encourage you on item 10 to stay the course. We're seeing some improvements at Cubberly, but we did recently have another citation for public intoxication at 11 o'clock in the morning when children were around. There are still, you know, a lot of belongings tucked away in corners and laid out in the middle of areas that people walk around in. You know, there's still, there's an ongoing thing. It could easily slide backwards, so everybody's sort of in our neighborhood kind of anxiously watching this one, and we're hopeful that y'all will move forward on it decisively. And then, secondly, I see on item 13 that you'll be approving the Walk and Roll to School maps for Safe Routes to School this evening. And I know you're only going to see a portion of those maps, but I just wanted to say a public thank you, huge thank you, to our city staff who worked on this. I, you know, I'm in a unique position to see the countless extra hours that they put in going out to school sites, interviewing students, looking at surveys, turning over their own personal schedules to turn out at events where they knew we would get a big turnout of students. I just really appreciate that kind of dedication and effort, and it was really way above and beyond the call, and I wanted to make sure it was recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Nielsen Buchanan, on item number seven.
Nielsen Buchanan, 155 Bryant. I will be brief. Thank you for your previous action on item number seven. I'm a bit weary in my pursuit of justice today. This is my 13th hour of doing something. I was lucky enough to pull jury duty today, so I spent the better part of the day jury selection. But there is a sense of justice about what's good for the neighborhoods, and I hope that you will take real careful consideration of the parking impact of this building and the others to follow. This is the 44th development that's been approved since 1986 without adequate parking. You've got a full description of that logic in my email. I hope you pay careful attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we turn for a motion on the consent calendar. I know Council Member Holman had her line on.
Yes, I'll be consistent with my prior votes, registering a no vote on item 10, not because I don't support the neighbors, but because I find a challenge with the order in which these items were brought to us. Thank you.
So, before we vote on the consent calendar, I missed Herb Bark on item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. I request that you pull this item from your consent calendar so that you reflect the proper flow of funds for this ballot measure, which is really funds for the project on Maybell Avenue. As you've done in the past, for example, when you had the money from Stanford, it was not a direct payment from Stanford to the project, but it flowed through the Residential Housing in Lew Fund, the grants and subsidies line item within the Residential Housing in Lew Fund. And I believe the same thing should happen with this money from the General Fund stabilization account. You know, if there were money in the residential in Lew Fund, then that money should be funding this ballot measure. If there isn't money there, then the General Fund can loan the money to the Residential Housing Fund. The point being that the only reason that there is this ballot measure is because of the Maybell Project, and the accounting for that project should all be done the same way. By having it attributed to the General Fund Stabilization Fund, it's as if you're saying this is some just general program that has nothing to do with the project on Maybell. But in fact, it's all about the project in Maybell. You may want to hide the fact that another $585,000 is being spent for that project, but I believe that the money should be properly accounted for, and that it should be done simply by loaning money from the General Fund to the Housing in Lew Fund and have the residential Housing in Lew Fund pay for the ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if we could have a motion on the consent calendar?
Second.
If we could vote? And that passes unanimously with council members Niss and Berman absent, and Council Member Holman voting no on item number 10. And now, if we move on to item number 15, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do. I think a brief presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's David Ramburgh. I'm the Assistant Director of the Administrative Services Department. Tonight, with item 15... Tonight, with item fifteen, we're returning to the full council after being at the Policy and Services Committee to discuss the allocation process for the Stanford University Medical Center funds. The main focus tonight will be to target us on what exactly is coming out of Policy and Services, and to look at the fund balances. The fund balances are, is a financial table that the full city council saw back on May sixth. On proceeding, or following May sixth, the full city council, as a reminder, directed the item to the Policy and Services Committee for a discussion of guiding principles and the process. The Policy and Services Committee held that discussion on June twenty-fifth, and tonight is bringing forward the recommendation from the Policy and Services Committee. The policy and services recommendation is really summarized here. It's also captured in your staff report. Essentially, for the infrastructure portion of the Stanford University Medical Center funds, it's recommended that a master list be produced of infrastructure projects coming from the Infrastructure Committee, and then that master list be considered for funding from Stanford University Medical Center funds. And then the Health and Safety Funds, the other portion of the S U M C funds, would be reviewed by the Policy and Services Committee. And then both recommendations for funding would come through the Finance Committee on an annual basis, roughly to coincide with the annual budget process. In terms of the guiding principles, there were no firm recommendations on, or suggestions from the Policy and Services Committee. However, the discussion at the committee level centered around primarily funding lasting and impactful type projects, and also there seems to be an emphasis on funding near-term projects rather than holding on to the funds to later years, to take advantage of the funding versus the decline in the value of the funding as construction costs increase in the long term. This next table is a summary of the dollars for the S U M C funds. As a reminder, it's broken down into six categories. The primary categories to focus on here tonight are the Infrastructure and Sustainable Neighborhoods category and the Sustainability Funds category. Both of those will bring in the neighborhood of thirty-four million by the end of twenty sixteen-seventeen timeframe. And then the Health and Safety Funds are the other primary category, and with previous council direction, the two million dollars of the Health and Safety Funds were devoted to Project Safety Net, so that leaves about two million remaining of those funds. And then the other funds are earmarked for specific linkages projects. And then what you can see is, on the far right column, we have the available funds, pretty much adds of today. There has been virtually no activity on the funds, except for a small portion of the Project Safety Net funds that were already budgeted in fiscal year fourteen, being spent so far this year.
So with that, I'd like to bring it back to the full city council for comments and discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know that Chair Niss isn't here, but we do have two members of Policy and Services here.
I'm well aware of that, thank you.
Okay. Typically, we turn it up.
Councilmember Price wanted to kick us off with speaking for Policy and Services, since Chair Niss is not here.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the staff summary. I think it very well highlights some major points and the process that we undertook. We had a thoughtful discussion about a process that made sense for the allocation of the funds from the Stanford University Medical Center vis-à-vis the development agreement. Just a couple of quick points to reiterate, there was discussion that we felt it was important that we have a process that was clear, and one that made it possible to allocate the funds for both infrastructure projects as well as community health and safety in a kind of deliberate manner, so that they would be impactful, and impactful results. Preferably, the funds, these funds would be exhausted within ten years, and it would be based on other discussions. As it relates to the Infrastructure Committee, as was mentioned, in terms of ranking infrastructure projects, and the second part of the recommendation, as stated, was that all of the funds under the community health and safety would benefit from, the allocation of those funds would greatly benefit from a further discussion within Policy and Services. Many recent items have been discussed, homelessness, et cetera, not part of the development agreement, but those kinds of issues we felt really would benefit with the discussion, again, back to Policy and Services, so we could provide a little more time and attention to that. And with that, I would like to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
And that's second by Councilmember Holman?
Recommendation by Policy and Services to the City Council.
That's correct. And would you like to speak further to your motion?
Only just a moment. I think the staff report clearly outlines why this is necessary. We have talked about this for some time as a council in terms of the appropriate allocation of these funds, and I think per this discussion and what's outlined before you, this process makes sense. Again, the distinction between infrastructure projects and items that are more programmatic, I think will benefit from bifurcating the discussion as outlined in the staff report.
Councilmember Holman, you want to speak to your second?
I really don't need to. I think the procedures set forth are pretty straightforward.
Councilmember Klein?
I'm speaking from the perspective of being the only member of the council who's on both Policy and Services and then on the Infrastructure Committee, and I might have some insights to help you understand where we're going on that process, since the motion before us says that we're going to allocate a list to a master list of projects derived from the Infrastructure Committee report, which you haven't received yet and will not receive for another month or two. But as a preview of coming attractions, let me say that what the Infrastructure Committee is coming up with is a list of projects that will be in rank order, but not just projects, but where the money is likely to come from for those projects, so that you can sort of mix and match. We still have a sort of a matrix that we're developing with some very good staff work as to not just saying that we like Project A, but that we're going to suggest that Project A be funded through either the Stanford money, or other, our present infrastructure reserve, or perhaps even a tax of one kind or another, but that any project has to be paid for, and the report will identify what that might be, and the full council may then take that report and twist it around, and there'll be a nice spreadsheet to play around with that you can move things from one column to another and back and forth. The idea, then, is that the council will adopt, at some point, a list that's either the one that the Infrastructure Committee comes up with, or some modification of it in some way or other, but in any event, that we do have a rank ordered list and where these are going to be paid for, and move forward. But we, I really wanted to get to all that so that you could have some sense as to what the third bullet point really means. I think it's a recognition that whatever the council does in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, may not look like the right thing in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, and that, so that on an annual basis, the Finance Committee would take a second look, or a third look, or a fourth look, as to how things are moving along, and might say that instead of doing Project A, which hadn't, we ought to really be moving Project D up the list. So that, just a recognition of that times change. The, what Councilmember Price said is absolutely clear, though I think from the, even though we may not have had a formal motion, that the P and S Committee feels that we should have these projects move forward quickly, that you can't do them overnight, but that we don't want to wait for five or ten years because of the time value of money, and we have a variety of needs that ought to be moving forward, so that the expectation is that we'll move forward as quickly as reasonable on whatever projects the council ultimately adopts as its priorities for the use of the Stanford money, as well as other sources of income. So I think we're, I certainly agree with the motion and what's been said before, that this is a, I think, a procedure that makes sense, and that we ought to adopt it.
Councilmember Burt?
I think the proposal in general is good. I have a few clarifying questions. So, within item number one, it states that the council will, once the council is in receipt of the Infrastructure Committee report, the council will develop a ranked master list of projects to use for the Stanford University Medical Center funds. So what I wanted to understand is, we'll have a rank list, which would be what would be the council's sense of priorities as of twenty thirteen, and then it says to be, to use for those funds. And I, that's where, what I'm not quite clear what that means. Does it mean that, that any, we go down that list, and so, say, if Finance Committee receives that list excluding the Community Health and Safety Funds, and they go down that list, and any project that's in, say, first ranking or second ranking would receive all funding from what's available in that category at that time? Or is it to be used to inform that decision-making? And I don't know who from the committee might help answer that. I have a few follow-up questions, but maybe take them one at a time, if that's okay.
Councilmember Klein, do you want to respond?
Well, I think the grabber's off a little bit. I think that the word "for" in the second line there should be eliminated. So, ranked projects to use the Stanford University Medical Funds, and what the, I think that might make it a little clearer to you, and I would expect that what the council could do a variety of things, but I think the intent is that the, when the council develops the list, it will also develop how a particular project is to be funded. And so it might say, this project is to be funded by, I'm just making this up, by five billion dollars from the Stanford Funds, and, one of the six categories, and one million dollars from our infrastructure reserve, or all six million dollars from the Stanford reserves, Medical Center Funds. I think it's important to, so just we have a, that we know where the money's coming from, so we know how much money is left. We have to account for it in our budget, one way or the other.
So I think that helps some. We may want to, while we're having discussion, think about how to make this more clear, because I think it's still not quite clear, the intent. I think I have a sense of the intent, but I'm not sure that it's fully reflected in the language, and I want to make sure when we come back to this a year, or two, or three years later, and we say, this was the instruction, that everybody understands what that really meant. And then, the final clause there, it says, that council, well, it's more in the clause, each year thereafter, the Finance Committee and council will review the status of the funds and projects on the master list for possible revision. And did that mean revision in ranking?
Revision in a variety of ways, but certainly in rank, as in the example I used. Time goes on, and we discover that something is really an emergency, and so thus we say, instead of it being ranked as third, or fourth, or fifth, that we say that this needs to be done this year.
And, so when we have this master list, a list can be done as, in, according to priorities, but priorities may not align with sequence. And so I'm not quite sure, and I think we need to add some clarity, how we align a project's priority, which may not be ready to be done. It may be the, say it's the number one priority, and if that's the way we set up the ranking list, it would be at the top of the list, but it may not be right for five years. So I, I'm assuming that the intent is that that list and those priorities would inform how we would, how many dollars we might spend on a project, and the sequence and the timing at which we spend those dollars. But that's not clear in these, in the motion, as I see it.
Thank you. Just having been part of the discussions, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. My sense was that, that the committee recognized that we had a good amount of funding, but obviously not inexhaustible. I think in general, the committee discussion, as I recall, it was focused on trying to spend the funding sooner rather than later, in other words, not hold on to it forever, and to try to establish a framework that would inform the budget process, as you're saying, so as to avoid a really kind of ad hoc kind of shopping spree or something on an annual budget. But then recognizing that it would, the decision still would be put through this, that, the sieve of the annual budget funding, and so that that could allow for revisions to take place. It could very well be, once you've made an allocation, if you say, we're allocating ten million dollars, here's the infrastructure thing, you make the decision in the budget, you proceed. Still, each year, there could be opportunities for revisions. Do you know what I mean? That would allow it to take shape. It could very well be, as you said, that there was an expectation that something could occur at some point in time in the future, and you get to that second year's budget, and that can't happen. I think the thinking was that the council should always have the ability to be looking at sort of how to reorient funding, but also, again, to still try to keep some overall framework so it was informed. I didn't think, for example, I didn't get the sense the infrastructure list was like some sort of fundamentalist approach that just sort of says, once we set it up, you can never, you know, move away from that. But again, it also is trying to establish a framework.
Yeah, that's clear at the end, that there's this possible revision, but what that revision would be is not quite clear, whether it's a revision in ranking, or priority, or sequence, what those different things mean. And also, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, really, Pat, with all due respect, there's a, it's a false dichotomy between priority and sequencing. Sequencing has to be part of the decision of priority, because there's a risk. If you don't spend the money, money may run out, so that if something is not ready for funding for five years, though it's a little hard to see what that would be, then it just, then it's not the first priority. So you're setting up, I think you're setting up, want to set up a system as to what things are going to be spent, where we're going to spend our money first. That's the priority. And while I'm there, there's another reason why we have the, after the first setting up of the council of priorities, why you have the Finance Committee involved each year, and that is, there's more money each year from the money we're allocating to infrastructure each year, and we were trying to set up a system that would sync these two processes together. So again, we have a system by which council initially is So again, we have a system by which council initially is going to say what it wants to spend its money on and that's subject to an annual review as more funds come in, as more priorities arise, as emergencies may arise.
Well, that that helps. I will say that I think it's a it's a common fallacy to equate importance and sequence as both meaning the same thing around priority. They those two things inform prioritization. And sometimes it's weighted more based upon immediacy, which driving sequence and sometimes importance. And we often don't talk about those as being different. And we merge them when we make decisions about what a priority is. And more very often, in different environments, we tend to just not recognize that we're merging those two considerations. But I think I think if we insert the clause that was stated to be used to inform, that would make it more clear to me that that's the intent. And said where we had to use for the Stanford University.
The "for" is, as I said, a city property word.
Yeah, as the city manager stated, it's it's if it was to be used to inform, I think that makes it reflects what was described as the intent better. So I will offer that as a friendly amendment.
So your friendly amendment, your your offer of an amendment, first of all, is to remove the word "for."
Actually, it's remove the words "use for" and replace them with "be used to inform."
Are you good with this?
I didn't make one.
Right. Councilmember Price.
Just a question. Are you saying used to inform the use of?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Either the use of or the potential use of?
Yes.
Actually, I I'm not comfortable with "inform." I think it's it would be better to say something like, master listed projects to guide the allocation.
I'm fine with that.
Of the use.
Yes, that's also gives better clarity.
And I would like just to make a quick comment here. I think the the intention here, without reiterating all the points that have been made, is to provide a process that has in some inherent flexibility in it because there are lots of different factors, as you pointed out. And as Councilmember Klein has said, too, there may be opportunities and funding and other issues that really that we are not in a position to anticipate and could come before us and require that we have some flexibility. So this was not the wording was not intended to be prescriptive or non-nimble. It was intended so that we have some abilities there through the Finance Committee and the City Council to kind of look at this in a more thoughtful way. I think that really was the intention as as we were discussing it. And, you know, conceptual project readiness, I mean, there are lots of different factors that really apply to any decision making that we would go through. And I think that was the intention and that will certainly be the reality as it comes forward from the Infrastructure Committee to Finance and to full City Council discussion.
Okay, well, so I have one final, and I I suspected that was the intention. I wanted to have us both hear better clarity on that and have it reflected in the language. Finally, is it assumed that all of the fund categories, with the exception of Community Health and Safety, would go toward capital projects? And the reason I bring that up is I I'm less clear on whether sustainability programs would necessarily all be capital projects.
Well, again, I I don't know that we have put this in sort of concrete, but there was definitely, obviously, an expressed concern at the committee that that the the funds be used for maximum impact, recognizing that they they they're not everlasting and it's certainly a tendency to avoid making funding commitments to sort of operational kinds of expenses. I don't think the committee absolutely precluded that, though. So I think the caution about making, no pun intended, sustainable investments here.
Yeah, and I think it's very possible that the it all of those, including the sustainability programs, would be capital. I just don't know that we've gotten to that point yet. And so I the way this was written, it it sounded like it's all going to come out of the Infrastructure Committee report, with the exception of the Community Health and Safety. And I just want to make sure that we aren't predetermining these things before we had discussions around them. And.
Councilmember Schmidt.
The discussion so far has been around the Infrastructure Committee report. And over the last two years, the full council has a lot of have had a lot of opportunities to talk about infrastructure. It was a key priority for last year. We had four sessions around it. And we identified the list, so there are no surprises on that list. And it will be easy for the council to deal with it when it does come. But the process for Community Health and Safety is a little different in the sense we have never had a comprehensive council discussion on health and safety. It's not something the council usually deals with, so it's an area that is a little more open. And I thought in the material given, there were several suggestions for gathering potential topics. One was a committee with Stanford with a couple members on it. Second one was through the city manager would take ideas and bring them to the council. But there's nothing indicated here of ways of generating that initial list of ideas. And I think it's important that we start with some notion of how do you how do you make a list? What's going to be on that list? So any responses from Policy and Services?
Kail?
Yes, so I'd like to jump in. The way this is is written, it I don't think it really captures the the full level of detail in some of the other points that have been raised over the last couple of months. Clearly, as it relates to Community Health and Safety, when that comes back to Policy and Services, my interpretation of this and my understanding, based on our earlier conversation, is we would discuss ways in which there would be a careful review of the utilization of those funds and the allocation of those funds from this particular category. Now, I'm also mindful of the fact that we have a parallel HISRAP process. And that, to me, it seems that we are going to have to come to terms with these different processes or parallel processes as we look at this. And this neither of the staff reports really get into that detail at this moment. I think one of our initial goals was to make sure that this particular element of the development agreement was set aside for further, more intense Policy and Services discussion. But there is not a lot of detail here. You did say you mentioned the idea of having a subcommittee that was touched upon at earlier discussions, but that is not detailed in full in this because, again, I think our intention is to provide some flexibility regarding the parameters of that discussion as it relates to the potential allocation of those funds. And perhaps the city manager has other comments or Councilmember Klein.
So if I if I might just just again, sort of revisiting some of the background, you know, first of all, I would assume that the recommendation presumes that at when this goes to the Policy and Services Committee, this actual discussion about the process to be used for making recommendations would take place. That doesn't preclude the council from a whole from from offering some direction. But two things. Number one, as you recall, out of the $4 million that was is allocated, the council has already made one decision, and that is to, in a sense, reserve $2 million of that $4 million for Project Safety Net related funding. Now, that doesn't deal with the decisions about how to allocate those funds, you know, within that arena, but you sort of of a sense already sort of made that suggestion. Secondly, you you will recall that this was the one distinct area in the development agreement with Stanford that actually called out for a kind of a joint input review process with Stanford about the use of those funds. And our conversations, of course, with Stanford have been about that, at least a minimum, that remaining $2 million. So we have a requirement to work with them. So I think that any policy, any process we do would obviously involve Stanford. Now, they've already done a lot of work and and I think have a lot of ideas about how that money could be allocated and spent. I would suggest that you'll want to have that input, but you probably want to have a process to get some input from some other community perspectives about health and safety needs to inform the ultimate choices that you want to make. There's no requirement that you allocate the funds. You're not sharing decision making authority with Stanford. The process just has a process mandating an input and and discussion.
Yeah, I guess my concern is just to make sure that before we get into the process of ranking, that there be an open process of generating ideas from Stanford, from other council members, from the community, that might be useful and helpful. Now, it doesn't say that explicitly in the in item two. So is there some assurance that we will go through such a process?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. If we could vote on the board now?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, your light wasn't on. So we've had one round. I don't really want to do another round if it's short.
It's short.
Okay.
So listening to Councilmember Burt's questions and even Councilmember Schmidt's questions around clarity, I have just a a simple amendment to offer to the maker of the motion. And that is, in the first recommendation, where it starts, the Finance Committee and the council shall review both the status of Stanford University Medical Center Funds and the projects on the master list for possible realignment. And I think that maybe clarifies some of the concern that's been expressed about clarity.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, so insert the word "after review" on the fourth line down, "after review," insert the word "both." On the next line down, "Medical Center Funds and the projects." And in place of revision, it's realignment. And the projects, funds and the projects. And just hoping that offers more clarity, that gives all councilmembers more comfort.
I'm not sure what the difference is, frankly.
Well, it clarifies that you're looking at both, both, not just in a series. So it provides the clarity providing both. And it also because revision is, I'm not really quite sure is the right word, it's realignment. So I'm not quite sure what revision means here. But realignment is how you reconsider. How the funds might be expended.
Yeah, certainly the projects, that's not a big deal. I guess I'm just I'm just looking at this in terms of when people read this in the future, will they understand what the intent was? I think revision is probably stronger, but I'd like to ask Councilmember Klein what he thinks, based on our earlier discussion.
I think the language doesn't make any difference at all. I think the change is.
So this change in your mind?
Neutral.
It's fine. Okay, so I'm I'm willing to go with that modification, both of those modifications.
Well, I I'm going to vote against it just because I I really hate these these last-minute revisions that don't really don't say anything different. I think that just all I do is.
So you're not going to accept it, then?
You know, I don't really I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I guess I I like the original language better. I think realignment could be confusing. I will not be accepting it.
Stick with the original language. Sure. All right, are we ready to vote? I'm not doing anymore. Oh, you want, wait, you want to do a comment on?
A change.
Okay, Councilmember Schmidt.
On item two, I would suggest an amendment putting a comma after center funds on the third line and adding, "Accept suggestions from Stanford and other council members and make recommendations." So that's his. From Stanford and other councilmen.
No, I will I will not be accepting that because it's 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 too prescriptive. I think it's the Stanford element is part of the development agreement language. And if we just limit it to council members, then we're excluding other input as well. So I think the original language is fine.
All right, if we could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with councilmembers Niss and Berman absent. All right, moving on to item number 16. Do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, council. I'm Monique Lacange, Zeezen Henney, the library director. And what we are bringing, what I'm bringing forward to you today is a recommendation from the Library Commission to rename Main Library, change the name from Main Library to Rinconada Library as part of the Measure and Bond Projects. The in a joint meeting with LAC in 2012, this issue was mentioned briefly. It has come up in several conversations and was most recently mentioned at the commission, the joint meeting with the commission about a month or so ago. And the group, the LAC, has had considered this issue in 2012 over several, over two meetings, when they looked at various naming possibilities, which included both neighborhood names, names that are related to geography and location, and did include a brief discussion about naming for historical Palo Altons. And so the report includes the background of the of the names that were highest on their list in terms of what they considered. We did collaborate with Steve Steiger and following the policy as established, go to the Paha Board for their input as well. The reason this comes up at this time, when the Main Library was originally constructed, given the information that that Mr. Steiger was able to find, Main was named for its function. Of course, a Carnegie Library here on this site had been the previous Main Library. And at this time, as part of the Bond Projects, resources and services are available through all of the the libraries, with Mitchell Park actually being larger in square footage than Main will be when it is done. So the idea of a Main Library as having some administrative function or having some specific activities related to that is not as relevant today, especially as items, information and are available via the Internet electronically, able to share between branches and things like that. So tonight, we bring that forward, and I'm happy to take any questions for you from you. I will mention that. I will mention that the signage package for Main Library does go to, does need to be prepared by Public Works to go to S.J. Amaroso, the contractor at Main, for bids around October. There's a six-to-nine-month lag time depending on the kind of substances or materials used. And, of course, the size of the name between Main and Rinconada is substantial, so looking for, for location and placement of those signs is also a consideration. In terms of cost, that's all part of the, the Bond Project, and library-related collateral now are most frequently electronic, so there's not a whole lot of cost and change to those, those kinds of items. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to take them.
So now we'll move on to the public?
Yes.
Welcome, council. So Jeremy Erman.
I'd like to start by reading to you part of a letter that my brother sent on this issue. The whole letter should be in your materials that you can read. Dear Palo Alto City Council, I'm writing to you about the action item on tonight's council agenda to adopt a resolution renaming Palo Alto's Main Library as the Rinconada Library. I ask you not to adopt this resolution. A strong central library is key to the success of any library system, and this renaming will add the diminution, both figuratively and literally, of the Palo Alto library system. There's only one City Hall, for example, although the city maintains offices elsewhere such as Lucy Stern. I fail to see how scattered branches throughout the city, how a clear central library will do anything but dilute the effectiveness of the library system. I urge the council not to adopt this resolution, and to look instead for ways to strengthen Main Library as the center of the library system. I'd like to add, you'll say that the Main Library, that Mitchell Park Library will be larger than Main Library. Square footage is not important, it's the size of the collection that matters. Mitchell Park will not be a full-service library, it will not be a Main Library. There are no plans, as far as I know, to duplicate the reference and research materials traditionally housed at Main Library. Furthermore, Main Library has, in fact, in anticipation of its remodel, discarded huge amounts of their reference collection and other books, especially music, art, and language, which I used to check out and which are no longer there. So I ask you not to rename this library, but to please fund Main Library, to restock it, so and keep it as Main Library. I'd like to add also, it really doesn't make sense to change the name when the city's two largest libraries are essentially closed. I think it would make far more sense to wait until all the libraries are open, then you can see what the landscape looks like and where the resources are. And if you want to change names, then you can take a look at it. But I really feel that this will be a blow to the Palo Alto libraries, and I urge you to keep Main Library as Main Library for now. Thank you.
Susie Tom, to be followed by Bob Moss.
Good evening, Mayor Sharp, Vice Mayor Shepherd, and councilmembers. I'm here as a community member this evening. I think that one of the important elements was not highlighted in the staff report. Palo Alto is a community of neighborhoods that we all take pride in. Libraries are our treasures, and we consider the, are considered the gems of our city and the parts of our neighborhood. That's why we have branch libraries. Each of us has an emotional attachment to our libraries and to our neighborhoods. While I was campaigning for Measure N, one of the most frequently asked questions was, how does this affect my library? At the recent LAC study session with council, there was some discussion about possibly renaming Main Library after a Palo Altoan of historical interest. While I'm certainly not opposed to naming city buildings or facilities after a person, I'm not sure this is the place to do it. The people, and let me repeat that, the people are expanding and renovating Main Library, not one person. 69.4% of the voters, that was 21,894 people, approved the $76 million bond measure. Nearly 1,000 donors have made gifts of over $4 million for the furniture, fixtures, equipment, and additions to the library collections. The Palo Alto Historical Association states Rinconada is historically appropriate for the library on Newell Road. With the exception of children's library, we have a history and tradition of libraries for the neighborhoods in which they are located. For these and the reasons outlined in the staff report, I urge you to accept the LAC recommendation and the Palo Alto Historical Association endorsement renaming Main Rinconada Library. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by Elaine Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp, and councilmembers. Speaking as a member of the Library Commission, I wanted to give you a little more background on the renaming process and why we selected Rinconada. A little over a year ago, Councilmember Klein suggested that we seriously consider renaming Main, several valid reasons. When Mitchell Park opens, it's going to take over a lot of the back-room type functions that are operating at Main now. A lot of the staff that's at Main will be relocated to Mitchell Park. And so, the facility, which is now Main, won't be performing some of the operations which were, let's call them back-room type staff operations, which made Main a primary function for the library system, more scattered. The fact that Mitchell Park is going to be larger is nice, but that's not the guiding principle that we looked at. We looked at the way that the operations of the library system were going to be redistributed, and we didn't think that Main was no longer going to be handling that. Then we looked at what we should name it. And, of course, we considered a lot of the adjacent neighborhoods, and one of the problems we ran into was which neighborhood you name it after, and of course, whichever one we picked, the other five or six that were close to the branch and also used it heavily would feel that they'd been overlooked or put down. So the next possibility is the way all the other branches have been named, and that's for an area, more generic area. And after speaking to Steve Seiger and speaking to some of the other people in the community, Rinconada seemed to stand out because it is in the Rinconada area, and this was originally Palo Alto as part of Rancho Rinconada, so it just seemed to fit. And that's the reason that we're suggesting Rinconada for the name of the, what used to be Main. I will mention one other thing that I had proposed, that we not make the naming final until we reopen Main, and I lost on that vote. But on the, on the vote to rename Rinconada was unanimous by the Library Commission. And we just think that's the appropriate way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Meyer, to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
Evening, Mayor Sharp and councilmembers. Before you decide to erase someone's history, I think you need a pretty good reason. Because that's what you're doing. By changing the name of an institution, you are erasing its history. The Lizmar was very clear that Main Library should not be downgraded, that Mitchell Park can be as big and as expensive as you want it to be, but it should not imply a downgrading of Main. No matter how I think and ask and talk to people about the reasons for changing the name, none of it makes any sense whatsoever. The idea that people can't find the Main Library, it's a block off from Market Era Road, I mean, it's, it's a joke, the reasons that are given for changing the name. The Lizmar, again, was very clear. I sent you several excerpts from it, and there are more, I just didn't want to repeat very often. Please don't participate in this make-work activity. There is no reason to change the name of Main Library, and it's been a waste of time and money and staff time to work on it. Thank you.
Jeff Lewinsky.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and staff. As someone who lives quite close to Main and has worked hard for it over the years, I care enormously about keeping it as a great resource for our community. I am open to any and all ideas about how to improve it. Alas, there are quite a few problems with the proposal to rename it as the Rinconada Library. First of all, that name simply doesn't reflect our part of town. The park's name is not widely used, and nothing around it is called Rinconada. The Neighborhood Association that actually contains the park isn't named for the park, but rather for the community center. Rinconada is not a very good name. Moreover, it's actually an ambiguous name. If you, if I say I'm going to go to the downtown library, you know which one I mean. Same with College Terrace or Mitchell Park. But the Rinconada Library, well, wait a minute. There are going to be two libraries adjacent to Rinconada Park. The one that's closer is, of course, we call it the children's library, but it's closer, it's, it's not separated by a busy road from the park. So it's strange to me that we would choose a name that's, has that confusion in it. Also, Main Library is a historic building from a quite renowned architect. A search on Google finds 107,000 references to the library. Most of those references are not under the control of the city, and they're going to last for decades. With two new names for the same building, that will only add to the confusion. If we are to rename Main, I agree with the sentiment that we should choose a name that's truly worthy. If it's to be for a person, let's have a person who's truly inspiring. If that person's last name happened to be Main, so much the better. Why not, if open government is really our goal, ask the community to submit ideas and let everyone vote on these? Maybe we'll get some truly great choices. This discussion is also an excellent time for the library, for the council, to reassure the public that any renaming is not meant to downgrade Main. The council can reiterate that Main will retain all of its public functions as promised in the library plan known as the Lizmar. In particular, that plan detailed Main should retain its collection and remain as the library for reference and research services. And as the bond measure promised, Main should have expanded space for collections instead of the reduced shelving being proposed. Without those commitments, what was once a great library will slide into mediocrity. It's vital that Palo Alto keep its word on this project so that it can hold its head up high for the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Barak.
Mayor Sharp and councilmembers. A number of years ago, when some citizens proposed renaming the Arastudero Preserve for former Vice Mayor Enid Pearson, a couple of councilmembers objected that we didn't have a policy for renaming city facilities. And the proposal was delayed until the council's procedures for renaming facilities were adopted. I believe Elaine Meyer has essentially paraphrased what that policy is. I don't recall seeing that policy before you in the staff report. And if you're going to rename the Main Library, it should follow your adopted policy. And I don't believe that the proposed renaming does that. Thank you.
All right. Now we return to council. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and make the motion for, to accept the resolution from the LAC to rename the library Rinconada Library.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Schmidt. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I would, actually. And I have to say, when I, when I was reading through this document, I ran around my house and tried to find this book that I had from the Historical Society Association, thank you very much, Karen, about all the street names in the city of Palo Alto. I had a great time reading it again and going over and looking at my, my street name, where it came from. I was surprised to see that Wilkie Way has been misspelled the entire time that we've had Wilkie Way in the city of Palo Alto. It's not supposed to have an "i" in it, apparently. And I also was a little fascinated to see how the-
Jim?
You didn't get to speak enough tonight, right, Jim? The, and then the renaming of streets after Maybelle was adopted into Palo Alto, and we had some double street names. And I, it was just a sweet thing to go back and to read. And so it was fun to read the history behind the name Rinconada and the old homestead that used to be Rinconada, right where Rinconada is. And so I think that they did a fine job of selecting this. I think it does set a location. I also know that we're doing a master plan for the Rinconada Park to incorporate in that other side of Newell, which has the Art Center now. And by the way, it took me years to rename the Art Center in my mind because it used to be the Cultural Center. So it took me probably about eight or nine years for me to call it the Art Center. But, but I did. And I'm also reminded that right now in City Hall, this is where the Main Library used to be. And I'm not sure if it was called the Main Library. They, I have not come across that information, but I do know that we can't call, it's the Old Library, is that what it's called? Library, okay. Well, anyway, I was thinking, well, it would be fun to call it Old Main, but it isn't even Old Main, because I think we used to have more of a library down, a much bigger presence of a library down here that no longer exists. So, for these reasons and others, I think that we should support the LAC. I think Susie Tom spoke eloquently to all the reasons why we should go ahead and, and accept this name change, and I, I think that the process worked well this time.
Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to speak to your second?
Oh, just to support the historical roots of Rinconada. The original land grant was Rancho Rinconada de la Rollo de San Francisco. It also was chosen by the neighborhood in the 1920s as a name for the park. So it has roots both in the origins of Palo Alto and in the 1920s, when that was just emerging as a city center. So I think it does have nice resonance with the community that we live in.
Councilmember Klein.
I move a substitute motion that we refer this matter to the Policy and Services Committee with the directions that they, in conjunction with the Palo Alto Historical Association, should bring forth a recommendation to the council for the name, a new name for the Palo Alto Main Library of a deceased, distinguished Palo Alto.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Price. Councilmember Klein, would you like to speak to your motion?
We do have a history in Palo Alto of renaming things from time to time. This is not something new. One speaker tonight referred to our recent, relatively recent renaming of the Arastudero Preserve and, to the Pearson Arastudero Preserve. When the school district reopened what was the Wilbur Middle School, the school district changed the name to JLS, Jane Lathrop Stanford. And so this is not something new. I think it's appropriate when we are changing the character of the building to some degree. And by the way, the function of Main remains the same. So it, this is just a, not a cosmetic thing, but it's a, it's sort of a truth in naming idea, nothing to do with how many books or how many services should be at the facility. In my view, this is an appropriate time for us to name a, an important building in our community after any one of a number of distinguished Palo Altons who are deceased whom we have not recognized. I think actually Palo Alto is deficient in this regard. We have probably an extraordinary number of really- We have probably an extraordinary number of really distinguished, even famous Palo Altons whom we have not recognized, and here's an opportunity. I don't think we should go out and search for opportunities, but one presents itself, I think we can do much better than Rinconada. Nice name, we already have one of our two major parks with that name. It doesn't represent any neighborhood, so it's really not a name that's going to help people find their way, and it's just sort of a duplicate of the park that's just right across the street. So I think that we would be remiss if we didn't use this opportunity. I recall that when we built the downtown park back in the 80s, a new use of land that was owned by the city, we came up with the name Johnson Park, which I think was a real ten-strike. Dr. Johnson, to those who don't know, was the first female OBGYN in the whole Mid-Pennsylvania area and had a very distinguished career, and I think it was really appropriate for us to recognize her by naming a park after her. And I think we have such an opportunity here, and I don't think we should waste it. The idea that somehow we've developed some type of policy that our library should be named after areas, I think is sort of an ad hoc after-the-fact attempt at justification. College Terrace is named after its neighborhood. Mitchell Park is sort of a hybrid because, after all, Mitchell was a distinguished, deceased Palo Alto, longtime mayor. And it's sort of, I think, sort of disingenuous to say, well, we're not really, we don't really name the library there after him, it's after the park, which is named after him. So that's sort of hard for me to follow. Children's Library is obviously not named after a geographic area. Downtown is. So we're sort of all over the place. And I don't think that there's any consistency there that we should be trying to follow. Instead, I think we have an opportunity. I think we ought to send this to PNS so that we can have a number of names considered and brought back to the council for appropriate action. One last thing, there's some things in the staff report that says we have to work fast on this. Well, I'm always glad to see us have to act fast, but gee, the LAC made their recommendation a year ago, September 27th, and we're only getting it now, and now we're supposed to act fast? That doesn't seem to me to be appropriate. And moreover, I think that we can handle it. Whatever name we use, settle with, is going to be there, I would presume, for a long period of time. So I would hope that is in the consideration, one way or another. Thank you.
I'm just going to speak in the middle and not at the end.
Kayla wants to speak.
Oh, Kayla, you want to speak just a second?
Yes, I concur with all the comments made. I recognize that if we go in this direction, we will certainly have continued discussion about this, and there'll be a lot of opinions about the kind of the name or names that could be considered. I think this is a chance to do something distinguishing or distinctive with this particular site. It is one of our many very fine libraries in the city of Palo Alto, and I think by taking this opportunity, which does not come around very often, it would be very worthwhile to do that. And I think it would be an exciting opportunity to do something that's a little bit different. And I look forward to having that happen.
So just briefly, I think all the arguments that Councilmember Klein made, you could make for calling it Rinconada as well. There's a nice symmetry between Rinconada over here and Mitchell Park over there. Both of them are next to parks. I think there's that sense that we do name our libraries after places, and this would be a different approach to name it after someone. I think that the LAC gave this some thought. I think we should honor what our commission did on this. I think that there's no real reason to go out and try and come up with and delay the whole process of the signing, frankly. And I actually wanted to ask our library director, if this process takes six or seven months to come up with a name or longer, what would that do to the schedule of Main Library?
You know, I would actually have to check. Just in talking to Public Works, like I said, they're on a schedule to have this, the sign package out and ready. Honestly, I couldn't tell you in terms of cost or delay or time. Unfortunately, that's not information that I have readily at hand. So I just don't know that.
So, but you said something when you started this process, that you said something about it's going to take six to nine months.
Yeah.
Sign package.
Right.
So if we don't have a sign package, what does that mean?
That means that we either delay the signs. Well, I mean, if there are certain signs that have, for example, emergency exit information or health and safety information, those could be installed as long as they don't have the name on them. We could go back and make changes to signs. You know, at this point, the project is Main Library, they have a placeholder for that, and are waiting to finish putting the signage package together when they know. So they could, you know, unfortunate, but I don't know the exact amount or delay in time. The Public Works and the project manager stated to me that the delay was more in terms of design, getting materials, fabrication, that kind of work.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I've kind of gone back and forth on this, to tell you the truth. So one question I do have for the director is, you mentioned design, that's one of the questions I have, like, so have signs been designed? Is there a design template or a design scheme that's already been established?
That's part of the package, the design package with the architect, and that has been fairly consistent through each of the libraries, but they have to put together a new package with the number of signs, locations, you know, that kind of information. So the basic elements are there, but they do need to look at that. And if they're affixing it on a different kind of wall, for example, different kind of materials that they're using, the difference between Mitchell Park being a new construction and this being a renovation, there may be differences in, for example, how they're affixed or hung to the wall. And so the specifications that are necessary for that, those kinds of things.
I was just remembering the process that the, what was it? Was it the art center? No, it was the new signage that was going up at Lucy Stern. The process, I think that that went through, if I'm remembering correctly, and it was bouncing back and forth between the ARB and the HRB and staff, and I think that's where it was. So I was just kind of curious how this process was running.
Ours is all part, was all part of the initial design process. So that's already gone through. That's already happened, as far as I understand.
I'm sort of intrigued with the idea of naming the Main Library for a person. As I've mentioned to some, I'm also like quite content with leaving it named Main as well. I'm not particularly enamored with Rinconada as the name of the library. Naming it for a distinguished Palo Alto, and like I say, has some intrigue to it. I'm wondering if the maker of the motion would consider an amendment that would include the possible consideration of remaining Main Library? That you'd consider a consideration of retaining the name of Main Library? The reason I'm offering that is because, well, see if you accept it or not.
Considering how that's going to play out, Karen, it means at some point you may have three options before the council. A person's name, Rinconada, and Main. And I'm concerned how you reach a decision. I don't have any problem with it being considered, but I'm more worried about how we count votes.
Well, my concern about not including it is, I can applaud the notion of wanting to name the library for a distinguished person, but what if there is not a person whose name comes up that seems appropriate for the library? I mean, I can think of somebody who was responsible for a lot of the archives there, but I don't know if we want to name the Main Library for him. So the reason I want Main back to stay in the mix is like, what if there isn't an appropriate name particularly that comes up or comes forward?
Well, how about we say then if, with the committee having the right to recommend to the council the continued use of Main if an appropriate individual cannot be determined?
I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, I agree with Councilmember Price that this is, whether it's our largest library or not, it's a very distinctive library, and Main is a very undistinctive name for it. And I think it deserves better. What that might be, I'm not determined at this point in time. I do, I'm not at all worried about taking a few months to do this. The design package is around design, not the particular name within a design. If the Lucy Stern signs decided for Lucy Stern Community Center to be just called Stern Community Center, it would not have delayed those signs six months. It wouldn't have delayed them more than a week. So I think we're misconstruing, that's a red herring, at least unless it's a very long process. And as I've thought about different possibilities, one I'll just toss out is we have Edward Durrell Stone, who not only designed this library, but Mitchell Library, Stanford Hospital, and City Hall, where we sit, and the Kennedy Center and Harvey Mudd College and the National Geographic Society. He's a very prominent mid-century architect who happened to have done some of his major works in little old Palo Alto. Now, whether that is the best name, I have no idea, and I'll leave it up to others to make recommendations. But to open up this process a little bit, I would propose, offer an amendment, rather than to rename the library for a deceased distinguished Palo Alto, and instead to rename the library for a deceased distinguished person in Palo Alto history.
Yes.
And that means it wouldn't have to be a Palo Alto resident, but someone who had a prominent role in Palo Alto history.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, perfect.
And that's it for me.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Thank you. I figured that this motion would come up tonight. It's been in the newspaper that, you know, somebody wants to name it Packard. It's, this has been kicked off by one of our council members to rename. I am a little concerned about this process right now because we've had a very committed library foundation who has done fundraising, a lot of fundraising, showcased fundraising in order to call out names for rooms and whole libraries. And I'm a little nervous about where this is going for that reason. I've done a lot of fundraising in my own life and time, and it's not easy to do. And I think that there does need to be a certain sensitivity to what we have just gone through in order to get these libraries furnished, or this group has done. I haven't done anything. I've sent them a check every now and again, but I haven't done what they did in order to stick their neck out there and really commit to millions of dollars to make this happen. I also am concerned that Heritage Park got named Heritage Park because they couldn't find anything distinguishing in a name, in trying to name that. It's not that I don't disagree with this is a good time to come up with a distinguished, deceased member of the Palo Alto community to possibly name this library. It's not that I don't want to do that as much as, I don't think we have to do it right now. I think that the location name of Rinconada is something that can be called Rinconada for a while, and if somebody wants to, and if naming comes up later on, we can always call it, you know, that person's name, and it will probably always be known as Rinconada or Old Main or Mini Main or whatever you want to call it because of the fondness that everybody has for the current library. So I cannot support this motion, and I am not at all worried about whether or not we're getting this in for signage. Those kinds of deadlines are not, don't bring a lot of integrity to me when you're trying to make a good decision about the community and also the charity and goodwill that so many people have given in order to try to, you know, furnish these libraries. So I will be supporting the original motion and not supporting this one.
All right. Seeing no further lights, if we can vote on the board? This is on the substitute motion. And that passes on a four to three vote, and it only takes four votes to refer out So now we're on to the Finance Committee recommendation. Do we have a staff report?
A brief, very brief staff report. Mr. Mayor, guys, something ready, huh? Val Fong is here, but I think the presentation from the, just the overview from the Finance Committee is going to be presented by Monica Padilla, the Senior Resource Analyst with
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have a very brief presentation tonight. Before you tonight, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, basically to a, suspend the full need rate option of Palo Alto Green, and to reduce the commercial customer block rate that exists within Palo Alto Green from 1.5 cents to 0.2 cents per kilowatt-hour or $2 per 1,000 kilowatt-hour blocks. B, to direct staff to develop a Palo Alto Green gas program to be implemented by July 2014, and this is to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions associated with residential and commercial natural gas usage. And C, to direct staff to develop a recommendation and come back to council no later than March 2014 on what to do with any excess revenues associated with Palo Alto Green. The reason that we're coming to you tonight with the recommendation to modify Palo Alto Green is mainly because council made a decision earlier this year to implement a carbon-neutral plan for the electric supply portfolio, essentially eliminating all greenhouse gas emissions associated with the electric supply portfolio. And this plan, as I mentioned, will start as early as 2013, and as you may recall, we'll get there by, we'll get there by using pretty aggressive targets in energy efficiency, continuing to develop our local generation for solar mainly, continuing to procure long-term renewable resources to meet our PS, and then also using our large hydro to help us achieve this carbon-neutral goal, and then using renewable energy certificates to neutralize any greenhouse gas emissions that are a result of market purchase that we have to make. So in the process of reviewing alternatives to what we should do with Palo Alto Green, we did discuss several options with the Utility Advisory Commission and Finance Committee, and ultimately took to the Utility Advisory Commission and the Finance Commission several alternatives, one of which was, should we just terminate Palo Alto Green? And ultimately, that was not a recommendation that moved forward. We also looked at, in addition to the one that's here tonight, just modifying Palo Alto Green. Green and taking the full needs option of Palo Alto Green and essentially greening up or purchasing renewable energy certificates for the hydroelectric portion of our city's supply needs, so about 50% of our portfolio, and also lowering the rate from 1.5 cents to .2 cents. But ultimately, we are moving forward with number two up there. And just a little bit of an overview of Palo Alto Green gas program. So this was the Finance Committee and a UAC recommendation to develop a Palo Alto Green gas program. And as I mentioned, it'll be to neutralize the greenhouse gas associated with natural gas usage. We intend to come back later in this year, if not early 2014, with the details of the program for a launch in July 2014. Next steps, so between now and December, we'll be working on this gas program, the Palo Alto Green gas program. We'll also be developing a local solar strategy plan for council consideration. And then again, in March 2014, we intend to come back with a recommendation on what to do with excess revenues. And then finally, we hope to launch the natural gas, green gas program in July 2014. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And we have no public speakers on this, and now it'll turn to the council. Councilmember Burt, would you like to kick us off as Chair of Finance?
Yes, I think the staff report does a good job really laying out the alternatives. At first, I was a little hesitant whether to go forward with the Utilities Advisory Commission recommendation, but the more we waded through them, it seems that these suggestions before us really give a good combination of, first, declaring victory. We were, I think, very hesitant to retire a program that was the most successful in the country of its kind. We had three times the percentage of residential participants as the second closest program in the country. And I can tell you, having gone to conferences and things, being very surprised how people in the green energy field were aware of the success of the Palo Alto Green program. And as a result, I think we're reluctant to give it up, but the fact is that we now are offering Palo Alto Green to all of our rate payers at essentially no additional cost, which is an incredible achievement. And there's no shame in declaring victory and saying this was a very successful program, and we've moved to the next level above that and talked about the success, while we then look to the future and say, and where do we go from here? But it doesn't have to hold on to something that we've now surpassed. So I think this gives us good alternatives. We're going to have some exciting work before us in the next year to figure out these additional directions that we should go in the next phases. But I think this is an opportunity to say, we had a great, successful program, and it's retiring after a great career, and we have something better yet that has replaced it.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councilmember Schmidt?
No, I didn't make the motion.
Do you want to make the motion quickly?
Yeah, I will move that the council accept the Finance Committee recommendation to, one, approve resolutions suspending Palo Alto Green and reducing for electric customers and reducing rates for commercial customers. As stated in the staff report, direct staff to develop a Palo Alto Green gas program as an alternative for consideration by possible July 2014. Implementation and direct staff to recommend on how to allocate accumulated revenues from the Palo Alto Green program by June 2014.
Councilmember Schmidt, seconded it. Would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, just like to reiterate what Councilmember Burt pointed out, is this a great triumph for the city. We had three times as many participants as other cities, and we arrived at a full carbon neutrality, and leads us to the issue of what to do next. So coming out of the staff and the UAC, the recommendation to explore what can be done to develop a gas program makes sense. There are some incentives for businesses to continue with renewable credits, and so to allow them to do that at a much cheaper rate. I think the third item on the proposal is because we were so successful, we generated something like $800,000 in surplus from the rates with so many people participating and the cost of renewable credits going down. So I think it's important to have that separated from the continuing program with the commercial customers, so those funds don't end up subsidizing the commercial customers who have a financial incentive to continue. And so in March of 2014, there'll be a separate discussion of what to do with those funds to meet the goals of, or exceed the goals that we set for it. So enthusiastically, I would support the motion before us.
All right, seeing no further speakers or, nope, if you could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously with councilmembers Berman and Niss absent. And now for item number 18, do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys.
City manager, can you correct the voting members of the League for the, thank you?
Thank you. Sheila Tucker, Assistant to the City Manager. So the next item before you is approval of the city's positions on two resolutions that will be considered at the upcoming League Conference later this month. Would like to first note a correction in the voting delegates. Our primary voting delegate is Councilmember Holman, alternate this year, Councilmember Price. So sorry for that confusion. There are two resolutions before you this evening. I would be happy to provide an overview of those. They are fairly straightforward, or we could go, you know, straight to any questions that you might have. Staff is recommending we support both of those resolutions.
We have no speakers on this matter, so, yeah.
I would move staff recommendation that the city council authorize the city's voting delegate to vote on the two resolutions to be considered in the annual League of Cities, League of California Cities Conference, to be held in Sacramento September 18 to 20, and approve the general guidance provided.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, I think staff's done a good job in presenting these, and I think they are, as you say, very straightforward. I don't think that there's a lot of, let's flip over to them again. I don't think there's a lot of discussion to be had around either one of these. I think they are pretty, both pretty much straightforward, and they'll be going to committee at the conference before we actually vote on them, but I think they're pretty straightforward.
Gail? Councilmember Shepard, Vice Mayor Shepard?
I just wanted to say something because last year, I think we had some odd things that we had to vote on, something from Needles about one of the plants that they wanted to have some historic whatever on it. And I think that these two items here, I think, are worthy of the discussion and the activity that League will give it at the conference, and so I'm glad to see that they're bringing forward good policy. And that might have been because they changed one of the application processes. One of them is coming out of committee from the League's own committee, another one is coming from the City of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to note that, and thank you for the work on this.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Just a clarification, I guess there are no resolutions that come from the floor, so there's no surprises in store.
I don't believe.
Not that, not to my understanding. There is a process ahead of time where cities have an opportunity to submit proposed resolutions or any of the League committees. Once that closes, to my understanding, there's no resolutions that will appear on the floor.
Thank you.
They also have a committee that looks them and scrubs them a bit, so that can't happen at the League.
All right, seeing nothing further, if you want to vote on the board? And that passes unanimously with councilmembers Niss and Berman absent. And that concludes that item. I would just like to comment on item number 14, which was on the consent calendar, and the motion actually that we didn't pass the item, we actually continued it, that was the staff recommendation. I just wanted to point that out to everyone. Councilmember Price?
Council comments?
Yes, council comments.
Okay, let's see. I participated in the launch of the Bike Share Program on August 29th, and I rode from University Avenue to Park Avenue near the Caltrain Station. It was great. I highly recommend it, and I think, I look forward to a lot of users using the new facilities. Also, Project Safety Net, as you may know, Project Safety Net manager, program manager, Christina Harena, has resigned, and the city manager's office and community services will be making determinations about how that position will be filled. Also, at the mental health board, Vic and Mary O'Jackian were the recipients of the Jefferson Award for their dedicated work in terms of suicide prevention and mental health advocacy, and they were acknowledged today at our board meeting. And those, the recipients of that award will go forward to be considered at a national level. That concludes my comments.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes. Item number seven tonight prompted me to think about two different overriding issues that I'd like to request that we agendize for a future meeting. One is consideration of discontinuation of transfer development rights toward downtown. And then the second is a need to review with the Architectural Review Board the role of the downtown urban guidelines.
So Councilmember Burt, the first one is actually already coming forward. I know staff's working on it. They're working on a package to do away with a number of loopholes, quote loopholes, on the parking, and that was, that was one of the items that they already have there.
So what timeframe would that be?
I don't know. I mean, in the next, let me think, I mean, it was in the next couple of months, for sure.
I think it's actually slated to be a bit sooner than that, and there's a plan to go to, I believe, the PTC with a package of.
So I don't think we're going to PTC first, are we? Because last I heard, we weren't, but anyway.
Well, what I was speaking to, we're programmed in September already, so October is the timeframe.
Well, here's the reason I ask. If it's part of a comprehensive program that's going to take longer before it arrives to council, then I would like to have this move forward at a sooner date to assure that we don't have compounding of the problem before then. If this is going to come forward as part of a package fairly soon, then I'd be fine.
Well, I agree with you, Councilmember. My understanding was they were going to bring it back within, you know, 45 days. It was what Aaron told me, I think, yesterday.
It's not being delayed by being paired with any other item. They're all moving forward as quickly as staff is able to do that.
Then that, within 45 days, seems reasonable.
There was another item you had that I missed.
Yeah, the, and I'll just, it's review of the, with the ARB, of the role of the downtown urban guidelines in ARB review of buildings. And I'll just state that I saw in the minutes from their review of item seven, that they had recommended against including a finding of irrelevance of the downtown urban guidelines because they said, well, downtown's eclectic, or something to that effect, and therefore the guidelines are irrelevant. And I was just shocked that, that, how could the guidelines not be relevant? That's exactly their purpose. So these are comments not for discussion, but they're comments that I'm just making now and would like to agendize that consideration. Now, whether, I guess I would be fine if the council simply wants to discuss this and use it as, I'm going to revise that request, that the council agendize review of the downtown urban guidelines and direction to ARB on their future use.
Yes, you can ask a procedural question.
My procedural question is if I can make an amendment to that, because it's not agendized. I'm wondering if I can clarify that, because I think you're getting at part of the issue, but the issue is broader, and we have things in place that actually provide good guidance that's being ignored. So I'm just wondering if we can, if I can broaden that.
Well, you can try and agendize whatever you want, and someone seconds it, well, no.
Okay. So I would like to ask that the city council bring, or the staff bring forward a city council review of the findings that are required of the ARB and a standard for compatibility.
So I will second that, and maybe these two things can come together.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Price?
I just, I just have a question. Would these items, as noted here by my colleagues, will they be embedded in the downtown study that's going on, or will they not be embedded in that? I mean, none of these things are simple, like it's not just trips, or it's not just square footage, it has to do with design, urban design, mobility. Is there a way to draw these together, or is there interest here in separating these out specifically? Because these, these various pieces theoretically do fit together.
So we're not really supposed to have a discussion on these issues?
So can I ask clarification?
You know, I think.
No, that's fine.
I think this is a more specific direction that is informing where we are. We can report later how that integrates or doesn't with the downtown plan, but I think that this is more specific.
Councilmember, I may have, Councilmember Schmidt, did you want to speak?
Just a clarification, on the TDRs to downtown, you say, coming with a package. Does that package include the comprehensive downtown parking study?
No, Councilmember Schmidt, it's intended to come in advance of that and to, at least on an interim basis, suspend the use of certain parking exceptions pending the larger council discussion of policy in parking.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holman, were you, did you need to speak, or did you want to speak? Okay, I've cleared all the lights. I think we're done, if anyone else wants to speak. Meeting adjourned.